Call this meeting. So, I guess this is not working. I'd like to call this meeting in order. Councilman Ferguson, would you mind doing the invocation, please? Or mute?
Hi, Father, we thank you. We give you the glory and we give you the honor. We just thank you for another day that we are able to serve you and even to meet on tonight. We ask for your guidance, your clarity, and even your wisdom as we take care of the city's business on this evening. By God, we just ask that it will be done. That you bless all that are in participant tonight, of the citizens of Lenardon, in Jesus' name, amen.
Man. Uh, Madam. Oh, please.
All right, hello, everyone. Councilwoman Jones.
I'm sorry, here.
Councilwoman Harry.
Here.
Councilwoman Hairston.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Coming back.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
President Curtis.
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume, she not here?
Think she's running a little bit late.
Noted. We have, uh, five, six in attendance, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much. Uh, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Do I get a second?
Okay.
Discussion. I would like to, um, on the agenda, we currently have a motion to, um, to appoint Captain Regis Bryant as Chief Police, but, uh, I'd like to remove that, postpone that until, um, a later date, becau- uh, until other things are satisfied before we can move forward with this appointment. And I would like to add the, uh, resolution to appoint, um, Mr. Dean Stewart as the Treasurer. Any other discussion? So, Woman Jones.
Has the, uh, background check and thing already been completed on, uh, Mr. Stewart?
It is, yeah, we're waiting on the response. He has already taken his fingerprints and his background check. Uh, there's just some sort of holdup. But, um, it should be here soon. But he will not start under the official capacity without it. However, it should be noted that he is still, even without it returned yet, acting in capacity as Treasurer. So, there's, there's no change in his status.
Thank you.
And it should be also noted that a background check was completed, um, by Robert Half before he started as a Treasurer, um, in the city of Lenardon. So now we're just doing it again for, uh, to being stepped with our protocols. Any discussion?
Yes, uh, Mr. President.
Smith Harry.
Yeah, um, um, yeah, I'm, I'm, that kinda concerns me because I thought it was already done and, and even though, you know, Robert Half may have done one, I think that, uh, we need to ensure that it's complete on our end before we move forward. You know, he's in active capacity, that active capacity, the liability falls under Robert Half at that point. I think that we need to make sure we follow proper protocol, cause if we do vote on this and we bring him on board, you know, um, without doing the background check, you know, what is, uh, liability on our part if something happens? I'm not saying nothing is, and, um, you know, like I said, there's no reflection of the candidate. It's just that I think we need to follow proper protocol when it comes down to these background checks and, um, fingerprinting and drug testing and all of that. So, um, that's my feeling on this.
Appreciate that, Councilman Herring. Um, I understand your, your concerns. Uh, I will say that, um, that he will not, I mean, he will not officially start until the background check comes on, uh, comes back. So he, this week, he's still under Robert Half. Um, and, uh, so he won't, he won't start until the background check comes back. So, uh, he, a- as a matter of fact, he, he can't start until we, you know, as a part of this, buy him out of his contract. So, um, this is just a, a matter of us, you know, receiving the results. Um, I, you know. So, uh, Councilman Ferguson.
So, um, basically what you're saying is that, uh, we're just taking a vote tonight, um, but it's just, uh, the, so the vote will be, um, if he should pass, I, you know, um, succeed, then it'll just be there. But he won't, he will not be working for the city of Lenardon until, or pay, on payroll, until, um, his, uh, background check is done. He will still be working for.
Robert Half. Correct. And, and we even talked about this last week, um, at the, uh, direction or, uh, recommendation of Councilman Herring to make sure we put in the resolution, uh, that this is all conditioned upon the satisfactory background check is successful, uh, six-month probationary period. Councilwoman Jones.
Uh, my question is this, and we have to recognize that these resolutions are legal documents and once four people, uh, which is a quorum of the council, has voted for, uh, uh, an item, then that becomes, um, the, the lead of what we're going to do. That becomes the business of the city is completed in that matter. So, um, I, I think for, as long as I've been on the council, proper protocol was to have the background check and fingerprinting done before we did a resolution to confirm the, uh, candidate for whatever, uh, position that we were filling.
Uh, and. So my question then is, what, what changes? He will be the acting Treasurer tomorrow. He'll still have access to our bank accounts tomorrow.
But he'll still be.
And he'll stand access to, to everything that he's doing right now tomorrow. Whether we vote today or vote tomorrow, he'll have access to it. Um, nothing changes. Once we vote tonight, there still has to be a process via HR for him to go through his HR documents, sign as an official and, uh, employee of the city. Um, and according to the resolution that we fixed, to make sure we had the proper, uh, information in there, he, this is contingent upon him completing, uh, a satisfactory background check. If this is the case, and we're concerned about the background check not being complete yet, then we should tell him to shut his computer off and leave the office.
I'm sorry, Mr. Day, Mr. Stewart has been here for ten months as a temporary from Robert Half, who Robert Half did a background check and found him, uh, okay to work this position. When he comes back tomorrow, he will still be a temporary from Robert Half, working in that capacity as a Treasurer. With a resolution at this point, the resolution is saying that the city of Lenardon will now take him as an, an employee, as a full-time employee, and we, and that our background check and our fingerprinting and everything has been completed, so that our bond stays intact. All I'm saying.
Appreciate it. We're agreeing to bring him on as an employee. He won't be an official employee until he signs on as an employee, which won't take effect until we buy him out of his contract, cause we cannot, he cannot work for us when he's on the contract with Robert Half. We have to cut the check to buy him out of his contract, and he has to sign on as an employee.
I understand that, but the resolution, as I, as I said, is a legal document, uh, uh, completed by the council to say, this is what the city of Lenardon will be doing.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Hairston.
Now, I was, I was just gonna ask you, what's the rush? Let's just follow the rules like we supposed to follow the rules. What's the rush?
So, initially, there, there wasn't a rush. Um, we were all on the call, I believe, last week. Uh, I thought we were all on the same page. Uh, we agreed that we will move forward with the, um, with the, uh, resolution. Um, I think we do have differences of opinions as it relates to timing of, of different things, which is fine. I respect everybody's, uh, differing opinions. Uh, I assume it was, like I said, so we was all on the same page. There, there's nothing to stop us from voting on this agenda, I mean, voting on this resolution. Um, you. Date was set. We had the agenda, and then just in the past, I don't know, day or two, uh, there have been some reservations about this vote. There, I, in, in my opinion, I don't see anything that should stop this vote, so.
So, so I'm just saying, so what if, what if, what if we vote for him today, right? And then everybody abstaining because they're not comfortable with the, um, the way that we going about it, like his background check and everything not done, and then he don't get the job because everybody abstaining, or they saying no to the vote? Like, why not just listen to what's being said and just put it to the side for right now?
But he has a, has a, you know, a right to abstain. Um, you know, and if they do, they do.
I mean, but he qualified, but people just not comfortable with the resolution that's in place. So, what's the point of questions?
Yeah, and I, I, like I said, I respect everybody's right to abstain. Um, and we can move on with the vote.
Mr. President, ma'am.
One second, uh, Councilman Herring, cause I saw Mrs. Ferguson's effort. Ms. Ferguson?
Yeah, I was wondering, usually, um, at the end of the, um, resolution, it says upon, um, what does it say at the end? Uh, cause I haven't seen the, actually, I haven't seen the, uh.
It says, basically, the appointment of, uh, Mr. Stewart as Treasurer of the city of Lenardon at the annual salary of blah, 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 be and hereby approved pursuant upon a satisfactory background check, six, and successful six-month probationary period. I'll read it before I'll.
So it doesn't say, uh, like, uh, effective today, uh, upon the date of the vote? Well, effective immediately, nothing like that.
This is pursued upon satisfactory background check. So our confirmation, the resolution takes effect immediately upon passage of the city council.
I don't like that.
And this pursuant upon satisfactory of a background check. Understand what we've done fifteen years ago. There's literally nothing to stop us from voting today. I, I think these are just, uh, these are some of the things that continue to derail or delay, uh, progress in the city due to, like, what is taking us so long? I, I, there, there's literally nothing in front of us stopping us from voting.
I mean, again, I think, when you say, uh, upon passage, I mean, I guess you just have to read it, because it sounds like what it says, uh, in the body of it versus what it says at the end is kind of different. Cause either it's upon passage, or it's upon, uh, a favorable, uh, clearance.
You know what? I will, I will change number four. I'll read it. This resolution will take effect immediately upon the, the successful completion of his background check. Will that satisfy?
I mean, it just need to be read, cause I, I, I think.
I will read it. I mean, I'll read it now. I'll share it with, I'll share it on the screen, and I'll read it. Ms. Jones, can, do I have, uh?
This is the Herring here.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Harry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Harry.
Yeah, I, I wanna bring up the same thing, cause, okay, this is what I'm seeing. Okay, if we leave it as it is, you're saying that resolution, you're saying the resolution becomes complete immediately upon passage. Okay, so then we gotta look at, okay, where does the liability ends and begins for the city? Once we pass it, as Ms. Jones says, once we pass it, that's a legal document that goes into effect. So you got, so does he work for the city? If something happened, does he work for the city? And the city is liable, or does he work for Robert Half? So you gotta look at that, you know? Then now, if we're gonna change it and say, this resolution goes into effect upon, uh, successful completion of a background check, there's no need to pass it tonight. We can wait for the background check to be complete, and then pass it once it's complete. I mean, I'm not seeing what the issue is. I think we need to follow proper protocol. Um, you know, and, and, and whether it's ten years, fifteen years, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens and this community. When it comes down to bringing somebody on board, did that, we do our due diligence to make sure that person's qualified, and that there's nothing in their background that will, um, harm the city, or the city's finances, or the citizens in, in general. So I'm just, I'm not seeing how the delay can hurt anything, cause if you're gonna put in a resolution, it, he, he, the resolution goes into effect, uh, upon successful completion of the background check, he still will be working for Robert Half, under Robert Half. So it's really, it really doesn't make any difference. I just think that, um, we need to wait and follow protocol and do the background check, the fingerprinting and everything, and when we get that back successfully, then we go ahead and take the vote. I mean, he's, he, he'll continue to work. He continue to work under Robert Half, and, um, we can move forward with what we need to move forward with, during the business of the city. I'm not understanding really in general by, what's the rush to get this through when we're not following proper protocol? Cause citizens will ask, did you follow proper protocol?
And what's proper protocol? I'm sorry, were you finished?
Protocol is, is, is doing a background check, making sure that the candidate has pa- I mean, passed everything in the background check, the, the background check, the drug test, the fingerprinting, all of that. Then you move forward, cause then you can put that in the resolution that the candidate has successfully completed the background check, and we're approving it. So we've done what we needed to do. Right now, we're putting the cart before the horse. Okay, let's bring him on, and now we, we'll do the background check after we, after we bring him on, you know? Then you got the issue of liability. If something happens, is he, is he working for the city? Is he working for the Robert Half? We passed a resolution saying that he, he's coming on board, so it leaves too much to, too much in the air when it comes down to liability on the city. I think we just need to follow the protocol that was set, um, in the personnel manual about successful completion of background checks and, um, drug testing and fingerprinting. That's it, thanks.
Okay, Councilwoman Fareed.
Uh, I'm next. Councilwoman Jones was next.
Someone Jones?
I make a motion that we table this, uh, resolution until after we've gotten all the necessary documents in place.
Well, we haven't voted on agenda, so we can actually just not pass the agenda. Um, or we can take, because it's not on the table yet.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we have already a motion in place. You can't, uh, at least I understand and can't present a motion. We can finish the motion that we have, and then take up your motion if we allow it. Councilwoman Fareed?
Yes, um, thank you. Do we need to pass a resolution in order to approve the, uh, buyout amount? Um, and if so, is that what we should be looking at right now, and then, uh, proceeding at another point to approve the, um, bringing him on? And my other question is, I thought the background check had actually been completed. It was just a matter of it being sent over. Is that not correct? Maybe Ms. Schultz can weigh in on that.
Ms. Schultz on?
Yeah.
So he, uh, my understanding is he did take his fingerprints, his background check. Um, uh, it should be back by now, but I think, uh, there were a couple of people out of the office, so. I don't know where it stands. Councilman, uh, Councilman Ferguson?
So the, um, acting chief wouldn't have that information?
Chief Jackson, do you know if that has come back yet?
Excuse me, good evening. No, his fingerprint results have not come back to Ms. Allen yet. Normally, excuse me. When the fingerprints are do- are done, the results come back to Ms. Allen by computer, and then she's able to go into the computer and pull the, um, and, and print the, uh, results off of her computer, and they haven't come back yet.
Mr. President, ma'am.
Councilman Harry.
How about the back, the actual background check? You, so you just run fingerprints? Don't you do another background check besides that?
Well, I haven't been asked to do anything. All I, all I've been made aware of is that he was getting his fingerprints taken, and he was doing a drug test, and that was, that's all I know about his background, uh, in the process.
Don't you run the background, don't the police department run the background checks on employees?
We do when we are asked to, but nobody's asked me to do it.
Okay, well, that's a problem for me. So, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to make a vote on this agenda, and I, I can tell you right now, I'm gonna abstain, cause it hasn't been done.
So, okay. Chief Jackson?
Yes.
Please run a background check on Mr. Stewart. I was told that a background check was performed, but now you're saying that it has not even started yet.
Okay, let, let me clear the air. When we do a background investigation on someone, first, complete an application, and then we, and then what we give them, what we call a personal history book. I have not given him an application, and I don't know, and I, and I know I haven't given him a personal history booklet. So, I don't know what forms that he's been given to fill out. All I know, uh, Ms. Schultz brought him down here to get his fingerprints taken, and for him to go to Concentra to get a, uh, drug test.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but every employee has to do a background check where you give them the application?
When, when it's presented to me to do a background investigation, yes. Just like the day when the, uh, incoming chief came in, I gave Ms. uh, Schultz a package to give to him, for him to fill out, to complete, and for him to bring back and to turn in to him. And once he does that, then that information will be turned over to the outside source, who's gonna be conducting his background investigation.
And that was for who? I'm sorry, I missed that part.
For the incoming chief, Mr. Bryant.
And, and is that done for every employee in the city?
That's done for every, that's done for every applicant that comes into the city that applies for the police department. Now, I'm not sure about the adminis- the, uh, administrative, uh, personnel. I know that in the past, I've done a background investigation on, um, incoming city manager, uh, Mr. George. I've done one on, uh, Mr. Ken, uh, Jones.
Okay, all right, Councilman Jones?
Uh, department heads get, I, I, if I'm not mistaken, have to have a background check.
Okay, and that's in the personnel manual?
Yes, it's, it's actually in the personnel manual. Actually, all employees are supposed to be getting background checked and drug tests.
Okay. All right, so, uh, well. Yeah, unfortunately, I was told different information, um, that a background check had been in the works, and there was just a tie-up in that delay in getting that information to us. Um, apparently, that information was not correct. And so with that, I withdraw my motion to, um, move forward with the, oh, resolution for Mr. Stewart. Councilman Jones?
Also, to answer, uh, Councilwoman Fareed's question, I think I saw a resolution today for Mr. Braden where they showed, I, I, I have to reread it again to see what, to make, to make sure what I'm saying is correct, that where they, um, showed a, a buyout of his, uh, a resolution to buy out his contract with Robert Half. I'm gonna look at that again, and I will send that this evening, uh, if I can pull it back up again. And I think the resolution was written to buy him out, so we may have to do a resolution to do that.
Ms. Fareed, I don't know if you, you have another question, or your hand has just been up the entire time.
Sorry, it's just been up, but I do have a question now, because I'm wondering, do we need to have two separate resolutions? I guess that was really my question. Is it two separate resolutions? Or should one resolution, uh, encompass both? Or can one resolution encompass both?
I believe we have one resolution for Ms. Lewis. Um.
We had two.
We had two. However, we want to do it. It could be one or two. It doesn't, you know, bother me any.
And I think it needs to be two, cause I may want to vote for the person, or not vote for the buyout.
Okay, then we'll split it into two. Um, so then, can we just be on the same page with the, the process? So, who needs, well, Mr., uh, Mr., um, Acting Chief Jackson, can you please connect with, um, Mr. Stewart and do whatever needs to be done to run, uh, a background check?
Yes, I can, um, find out with documents that he's been given to fill, to complete. And, uh, first I'll start with the initial app, application for the, uh, position that he's, uh, applied for. If he hasn't completed an application, then that needs to be done. And then I will give him a, uh, personal history booklet, and that, the information in there is what you do your background investigation on, the information that he provides in that personal history booklet.
So, it's proper protocol. So who has to notify you to do this?
I guess the city manager and, um, HR, Ms. Schultz.
And so the application process happens when?
When the person, when the person is applying for a position, he has to fill out a, he has to fill out an emplo- excuse, an employment application. And I don't know if he's done that.
Well, say yes, but clearly, uh, you know, I was wrong about the other point, so he may not have. Who knows? Uh, Councilman Fareed?
Yes, thank you. For the sake of efficiency, can we allow the administration to take care of, um, what needs to be taken care of for hiring purposes, and then let us know when all have been satisfied, so then we can, um, put forth a resolution and approve it? I just am hesitant now that we may be meeting several times on this, when we really just only need to meet once.
I, I hundred percent agree. You know, if you guys are waiting on the council or me to, you know, say something, I, 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 I was under assumption that that was an administrative thing. So, uh, Councilwoman Ferguson?
Um, I understand that, uh, maybe Ms. Schultz is trying to come in.
I don't see her.
Okay.
I, I, okay, there she is. Now, they'll, it just, just popped up, okay? If Ms. Ferguson is finished, I just wanted to say this.
Yes, that, yeah, thank you. That, that was it.
Councilman Jones?
Okay, um, I think that the, the, um, guideline would be, if the council has to confirm a candidate for a position, once the ca- once the candidate is confirmed, because this is what I did with Mr. George, then I go back to HR and let them know that the council has confirmed this person, and then she can, uh, start with whatever, uh, administrative, uh, areas that she has to pursue. As so, as so far as, uh, and the, and at that time, I had a city manager, um, uh, she, uh, Chief O'Donnell. Once I told him that a, that Mr. George was, uh, confirmed by the council, then he proceeded to do the background check. He knew to do the background check. But we have to go back to the, the, uh, HR person and let them know, so that they can notify the person that they've been, uh, accepted, and then uh, let them know what the, uh, procedures are from there, at, once that they have been, uh, notified of employment. Now, Ms. Schultz can, um, elaborate on that if I am, um, not, i- if it's not gonna be that way now, but this is what I did when Mr. George was here. Thank you.
Uh, she just moved. Uh she just moved, oh, uh Ms. Schultz.
Good evening. Sorry, I just left City Hall, so let me let me start this. I was under, I was told, and I was under the impression, I saw nothing different, that um. Mr. Stewart was getting the same type of security that Mr. Mr. uh George received. And what I did for Mr. George was fingerprint and drug test. From there, the, if I'm not mistaken, the lieutenant did the total background investigation. Now, the reason why there is a delay is because the people, they say Coke uh Coke Concentria will not answer the phone. When Mrs. Allen, the administrative assistant, attempted to call to find out the status of the drug te- of of the uh drug test. And we had not, they had not heard from the fingerprint as of today. This is the fingerprints and one in late because they put police officers in front of everybody else. Now, if there was anything different, I wouldn't made aware of it. Uh there's nothing in um in uh. Mr. Brad's folder, there would allude it being anything more than than what the norm is. And that's, that's what, that's why I went back.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Appreciate your work. Alright, well, the the motion has been withdrawn. Uh Mr. Herring or Ms. Jones, is there some type of written protocol? Or?
You really need to follow through with your motion. Your motion has, it's been a motion in a second, so you're gonna have to go through with the vote. To accept the agenda, if there's no motion to accept the agenda.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh motion to accept the agenda and then I can ask that question. So the discussion is over, we can go ahead and vote. Um Ms. Lewis.
Alright, um Councilwoman Jones?
No.
Councilman Harry?
No.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Uh, counsel, okay, uh Councilwoman Fareed?
No.
Vice President Ferguson?
No.
President Curtis? President Curtis?
No, did you hear me? And I think uh Councilwoman Gion was on the phone as well.
Uh uh Councilwoman Gion?
So I briefly saw her.
Okay, it it failed.
Okay. Alright, uh and back to you, Mr. Herring or Ms. Jones or Ms. Ferguson about uh. Uh written protocol somewhere.
For what we gotta do next?
So. There's a, somewhere, at least from my standpoint, there's a breakdown in communication, right? So uh this is an appointment position. Um and it's my understanding that, you know, with these appointments that. Administration handles all of that. The only thing that we do is vote to confirm. And everything else is handled on the administrative side, the city manager and um Ms. Schultz. Uh but from this meeting, I, you know, understand that nothing was told to to the chief. And I'm wondering, you know, did I need to say something to the chief? Um and as relates to, you know, protocol of um the vote. Or or after, because I, to be honest, what confused me is. Last week, we were on the same page and with putting in the resolution. Soon upon satisfactory background check and successful six-month probationary period, to me, meant that this did not go through. Unless the person completed it and, you know, that's. Normal, I guess, in the realm that I'm in, so I'm just a little bit confused as. As now to, is there a written protocol that can give us guidance? To situations like this and not just of the way we used to do it. Or what I did five years ago, just like something written that I can refer to.
The personnel manual states that they, that once we, once we decide on a candidate that we want to bring in. The HR is supposed to send them a conditional letter saying that they're being considered. But they have to go through the background check, fingerprinting and all of that before the legislation comes to us for approval. And I mean, I actually, the system actually worked today because we found out now that. Um the candidate for treasure only had fingerprinting done. And he should have had the full background check, a full compliment, a complimentary background checks to include drug and um. Um reference check and all of that. And normally what happens is. Once the council says that's who we want to go with, you're correct, we drop it into the administration's hands and they're supposed to take. Pick the ball up and make the, and do the full background check that's required of the candidate that's required in the personnel manual. So. You know, I mean, that's not our responsibility. It's once, I mean, you you tell them, we're we're considering this employee. Okay, they need to do everything they need to do in order to uphold the personnel manual.
Okay, I'm I'm gonna go to Ms. Schultz real quick. Uh Ms. Schultz, uh 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 thank you, Councilman Harry.
Um, I I guess I am as confused because he had the drug test. We're waiting for that to come back. He had the fingerprint, we're waiting for that to come back. He completed the application to give to Lieutenant Robinson. Uh once everything comes back and that's how uh Mr. George was handled. Now, I'm trying to figure out what what was done differently between, and I'm only for my own identification, so this won't happen again. What's the difference between when Mr. George was handled versus now? I I I don't understand, we're just waiting for the stuff to come back before we can say everything clear.
And that's, that's the difference. That's the the personnel manual says upon successful completion of the background check. Not waiting for it to come back. You gotta, you you when you get it back and it says it's been successfully completed, that's what it is.
Okay, when you say, hit me up, Mr. Herring, when you say background check, he just talk, you're not talking about the part that Lieutenant Robinson does. You're talking about the part that that I initiate to get done. Is that what you're talking about?
All of it. Your 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 part, the drug testing, the fingerprinting and the. Part that the police do, all of it. The whole thing is the background check.
Okay, okay, alright. Uh thank you for that, and I thank for clarification, I got that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, I saw Ms. Ferguson, Ms. Reed and then Ms. Jones. Ms. Ferguson.
Okay, so, just for clarity for myself, once we say we are going with, um you know, we approved the uh appointee. Whose responsibility is it to request for the complete? And administration, but I mean, is it um the city manager, is it the HR, who then requests the um? The um background check?
It's it should be the city manager. Yeah, should be the city manager.
Or once the council president says, this is our candidate, this is our choice, then the city manager. Goes back to HR and to the police, she, whoever, the police department and let them know that this is what uh needs to be done.
Right.
And every, and everyone, at at this point, just for clarity also, all employees of um. Uh tentative employees for the city of Glen Arden, it's that three-level um clearance, which is. I mean, I'm asking, what's the fingerprints, uh the um. Uh drug test and the application. I know that the officers get a little bit more um. But, yeah.
Yeah, that's what the personnel manual says. All all employees, doesn't say, it says, any applicants selected for hire.
Not just the um the director.
Nope, says all applicant.
Okay, thank you.
You just shifted on me. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Schultz.
Um, I can tell you that that's not how I was hired. When I was hired, they did the drug test, they did the um. They did the drug test, they did the fingerprint and Lieutenant Robinson worked on the uh. On on my security when I was there. So I I I what we don't have and what we need, as you said, President Chris, is something in writing that spells out the steps. Step by step by step.
It's in the personnel manuals, it says it in there. It's successful completion of the background check. I mean, how much more do you need? I mean, it's. Chapter four, section five.
Well, the problem is, sir, is that I'm finding, listening to this conversation, the background check is is is. How do I say this? Background check is not necessarily, is is not everything in the background check. I know, I know when we brought on George, when we were, were the executive assistant.
Then that's a problem, that's a problem with, that's a problem that I have as a council member because we don't know what's going on. We're not in administration, that's administration's responsibility. Following the steps that's required for bringing on these applicants, you know, I I mean. It's not because this council did anything.
I'm not saying it's coun- I'm not saying it's council. I think the issue is, from my standpoint, is HR. I have not had any strong eh administrative uh 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 city council, I mean, I'm sorry, city manager. Is there long enough to 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 walk me through any of these processes that I've gone through thus far. So I mean, I I I have no problem saying if I, if I drop the ball, I drop the ball because that's the way it's been dropped since I've been there. And no one has told me until just now, anything just.
You know, at at this point, you you we're not trying to fingerpoint of anybody dropping the ball. You know, at this point, something is highlighted and I just think we need to work collectively to 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 fix it. If it's something that we need in writing, Mr. Herring said that it is in writing. It sounds just to be a communication issue where a background check is defined different for different employees. So let's define what a background check is. Is it fingerprinting and uh what's the other one? Uh drug testing or is it inclusive of the fingerprinting, drug testing and the official? You know, police background check. So no fingerpointing, you know, we all on the same team, just gonna work to to fix it. Uh so we better be in better position to move forward. Uh I think it was Ms. Reed and then Ms. Ms. Jones. Councilman Fareed?
Yes, thank you. I think we just need to get clarity on what steps are supposed to be done at what point, because it sounds like. We are confirming the appointees offline. Then want them to get a background check and then we're coming in with a resolution to formally do the confirmation, which. We're confirming an appointee why. Think is appropriate um and contingent upon the necessary checks. They hired. I'm just trying to figure out why we like have. Someone um who was put for. Have them go through the background check. Am I, sorry? Am I still breaking up?
Yeah, we we didn't hear about half of what you said, so.
Can you hear me now?
You know.
Okay, what happens if someone um goes forth in the process to have their background checked, fingerprints done, et cetera? And then we come with a resolution and it doesn't pass? So, my question is, why are we doing the confirmation after all of that? Or are we saying we already confirmed them after we did the interview and said, okay, we like this person? Because what's the point now? Is just this resolution just a form formal expression of the confirmation that we've already provided? I'm not, I'm not, I'm unclear now on what we're even doing.
Yeah, I I I think you and I are on the same page, Ms. Reed. This point, I do not know. Councilman Jones?
A candidate applies for the job. The HR person looks through a a cannot a candidate, but several candidates may apply for a position. The HR person looks through the apps and sees who's qualified, who's not. They submit the applications to the um the mayor. If the mayor is not proceeding with trying to fill the positions and the council has to step in, then the applications are submitted to the council. The council looks over the applications, they pull out who they'd like to interview. And once the interview is done, then we confirm. And say, this is the applicat- this is the applicant or the candidate that we would like to see in that position. Then it leads from there. We let the kiss, the council president lets the HR know and the city manager know. This is who we we've chosen, then they proceed with the background check if it's a uh. Put a a appointee position or if I I'm with, as far as uh employees, I don't, I don't know. But in eh dealing with an appointee position, then uh they will proceed with the. Uh background check from the police department and they'll do the HR, I mean, the um drug testing and fingerprinting. Once that is done, the resolution is submitted to say all those things have been done. We have, we have interviewed it, we have done all of the necessary uh background check, drug testing and fingerprinting. Uh comes back to the council. Once the council confirms, that's more than likely who the person it is that that they're going, this is going to be accepted. So, yes, we have to do all those things prior to make sure that those things are in check. And then once it comes to the council with a resolution, then we solidify it legally and saying, this is the person that we hired for that position. So I I I don't, I'm not understanding what what the issue is. Uh Mr. Herring uh completely uh. Stated that in the personnel manual gives you guidelines as to how these things have been done. Which a resolution was also submitted for that personnel manual because we all went over it for two years almost. To get it to where it is today. So that people would understand when they're hired to the city of Glen Arden, this is what you're accountable and responsible for. And this is what we're as council, we're accountable and responsible for. This is what the administration is accountable and responsible for. So eh to Ms. Schultz, I would say that uh, she's still here? Looks like she's gone. Oh, there she is. To Ms. Schultz, I would just say, and and when you go into the staff meeting, in a staff meeting with the city manager and. And whoever else, one of the things that you might want to put on your um to-do list is for her to sit down. Uh and the staff sit down to say, how do, what is it that's not clear about? Uh how things are done as far as when we give the uh 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 an employee or an important or an appointee. Uh when we bring them on board, what is the cri- what is the, what is a solid uh criteria? If there's something that needs to be added to the personnel manual, then have the city manager submit that resolution to the council for our review. Thank you.
Council President?
Uh Councilman Fareed?
Yes, I just, okay, so I'm just gonna state this. I think fundamentally, I disagree with the role that the legislators. Are playing in hiring personnel. Per the charter, it appears to me that the only people that we should be hiring in the sense of like deciding who are the the candidates. Is the city manager because the charter allows for that to either be done by the council or the mayor and the council clerk. I do not think that this uh council should be as involved as we have been in selecting candidates. For the roles, that is the administration's responsibility. I believe it is our responsibility to confirm whom the administration is bringing forth as the candidate that they want to proceed with. So with that being said, I feel like we're getting ourselves entangled in a lot of uh administrative um process that we. Don't need to be involved in and what, and even what we're citing with Mr. George, Mr. George was the city manager, he was not the treasurer. So I think fundamentally for me, which is why I did not participate in the treasurer uh interview. Is that we have to be legislators and allow the administration to be the administration and take care of. Those tasks that they're responsible for and then when they have completed what they need to complete. Provide us with the necessary information for us to do what our part is, which is to confirm. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fareed. Mayor Cross?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Councilwoman Fareed, for your very astute observation. I want to quote. City of Glen Arden legislation from twenty twenty one CR zero three twenty twenty one in. Sponsorship Councilman Don Juan Williams, which was public hearing October twentieth twenty twenty. Regular session. It was, the date of introduction was November ninth twenty twenty. This is a charter resolution to amend the article nine, personnel, section nine oh one, authority to employ personnel. Therein be it resolved and ordained that this article, under this personnel section nine oh one, the authority to employ personnel. Has been repealed and reenacted and amended to read as follows. In section nine oh one, the authority to employ personnel, the mayor. And the recommendation of the city manager and with the approval of the council shall appoint the heads. And the recommendation of the city manager, and with the approval of the council, shall appoint the heads of all. Offices, departments and agencies of the city government. As established by this charter. Or by ordinance, all offices, departments and agency heads shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor. All subordinate offices and employees of the offices, departments and agencies of the city government shall. Be appointed and removed by the mayor in accordance with. The existing rules and regulations as well as in any merit system which may be adopted by the council. Now, I read through this resolution and I thank you for allowing me to speak at this table. The interesting discussion here is that you have taken all of the requirements of the mayor to make those recommendations to the council. And I do not take kindly. To how long we have had these resolutions out since October last year. I appreciate Councilwoman Fareed's communication in that she's acknowledged a very key point, which. As the mayor of the city of Glen Arden, I am so honored to hear Councilwoman Fareed communicate that. And my compliments for that, because the truth is, the mayor makes the recommendations. The council can confirm or not confirm, and then we make the next recommendation. What has happened is a tragedy. And it's a travesty, and we need to move forward. We have always asked for a background check, fingerprinting, and we have always asked for a drug test. We had to do it for Mr. Mr. Jeff Hammond before we could even appoint him to the Youth Advisory Committee. He wasn't any different than any other person, even the city manager had to go through that. So this is the standard, and I can appreciate where Councilman Herring is coming from. Because we do not need to put a resolution on the table until we have satisfied that by the city. So, I can appreciate all of the conversation that's happened relative to not moving forward, and I am very encouraged that the council did not. Vote to move forward. Until we are sure that we have the proper candidate in place. And I just wanted to acknowledge that for the record, that CR zero three, twenty twenty one has been persistently ignored. Over the course of the last year. It is the duty of the mayor on the recommendation of the city manager and with the approval of the council. That's why this is so disjointed.
Thank you, Mayor Cross. Uh, I will say that it's not a question of us not having the appropriate person in place. We do have the appropriate person in place, it was just following the proper, the proper protocols. Uh, and. Uh, just for the sake of the um. Uh, the public, because this is being recorded. You know, I I I am in agreement with Councilwoman Fareed that we should not be getting uh knee-deep in the administrative matters. I wholeheartedly agree. However, as it relates to the chief, the treasurer and the city manager, because those are all appointed positions. I do believe that the legislation plays a role in the confirmation process. Uh, and unfortunately, uh, as it relates to the comment that the mayor said that we have had these since October. Uh, without going into too further detail, unfortunately, some uh of the candidates that we have found that were. Uh, in the appointed position were not qualified to run uh the uh the appropriate um. Uh, areas for which they were uh appointed. Uh, as legislators, we do have a responsibility to make sure that those who are in those top positions are qualified. And will uh uh do right by the citizens of Glen Arden and uh upon our confirmation hearings. We were able to discover that. Some of those individuals were not even remotely qualified. Uh, which is why the legislation took the steps to not move forward with those individuals. And to look out for the best interest of the citizens of Glen Arden. Uh, and I do believe that uh the pe- the. Uh, the person that we have before you ask the treasurer is the right person to fill this position, we just have to follow the correct. Protocol. This person has been in this position for almost a year now, has been taking care of the finances, has not taken one day off. Uh, but have been dedicated to the 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 city business and has made strides in the advancement of our finances. Uh, so I just wanted to put some context. Uh, I I agree with some things the mayor said and and vehemently disagree. Uh, with some uh implications that the council has not moved on things since October. We have moved on it. Uh, we just found that some of those pe- those uh appointees were not qualified to handle city business. Uh, with that, I think that this meeting is uh has come to an end. I already ran over the fifteen minutes I thought it was going to take. Um, council, oh, in case she took her hand out. Uh, Councilman Harrison, are you good to go?
Sorry, I'm good to go, I'm good, thank.
Councilman Herring?
Yep, I'm good, thanks.
Councilwoman Fareed?
I'm good, thank you.
Councilwoman Gion still on? Councilwoman Jones?
Uh, Council President, thank you and thank you for so elo- so eloquently uh expressing. My sentiment in your last statement. I'm good.
You, uh, and Councilwoman Ferguson?
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
All citizens who came on, I take full responsibility for uh coming on to try to push us through. I had a misunderstanding of um. Of the background check being, you know, close to completed and, you know, and we were able to. Highlight some deficiencies and hopefully get on the same page and be able to um. Fix those deficiencies so that our government can run a little bit smoother. So again, apologize, uh, and I look forward to hearing from you and seeing you at our next council meeting. Uh, have a blessed day. This meeting is now.
Thank you, Council President.
Good night.
Good night.